Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Goodbye, my good citizens of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
invocation by Supervisor Pataki.
Dear Lord, we ask for your blessing on all of us gathered here today, and ask for your guidance as we discuss and adopt the 2021 county budget. Tomorrow is election day. It is our hope that every citizen takes their constitutional duty seriously and votes for the candidate of their choice. As for a candidate that will unite our country once again and restore the respect we once had from other countries. We ask for your protection of our law enforcement officers who pin a badge on daily knowing that there's a chance it won't come home again. But they do it daily without hesitation for all of us. We ask for your protection of all our firefighters, first responders, doctors, nurses, and all public service men and women. Please keep our servicemen and women out of harm's way and bring them back home to their families. Lastly, Lord, please put an end to all the violence in our cities and the natural disaster that have plagued our country and other countries these last few years. We ask this in your name, Lord. Amen.
Review and approval of October 13, 2020 county board minutes. Moved by Lattick. Seconded by Splinter. Any corrections or changes? All those in favor with aye? Opposed? Minutes are approved. Correspondents?
2021 Portage County Planner.
One other thing FYI, and it came to my attention today, is our meeting for November 10th. In the past, the intention of that was for a veto override. We currently have five items that are on that agenda for the 10th. If those items are found to not have to be time sensitive, that meeting, other than the executive vetoing it, and it looks like we haven't had any amendments at this time. If that happens, it will be his budget that came forward. I wouldn't think he would veto it. So there may not be a need for that meeting. So stay tuned. But I am talking with staff today and tomorrow about things that are time sensitive of the five items that are on there. I had a discussion just a little while ago with someone. So just FYI, stay tuned. Jen's smiling at me, so we might have the meeting on the 10th. So, all right. Presentation, Health and Human Services Director Shabelsky, COVID-19 update.
Good evening. Is this on? Okay. Good evening. Good to see everybody again. Just a quick update for you this evening. As of today, here in Portage County, we've had 3,068 positive tests. We've had 18,088 negative tests. Currently, as of today, we have 467 active cases in Portage County and 2,580 recovered. So about 84% recovered and 15% active at this current time. We unfortunately have had 21 deaths here in Portage County. And currently, we've had 144 people hospitalized since the start of the pandemic, with three new cases going in yesterday. And there are currently 18 people hospitalized at this time. So our correspondents and our communication with our healthcare providers will tell you that they're taxed at this time. Bed space is something that they're... Didn't know what happened. So bed space is something that they're dealing with, that issue that we'll continue to deal with as we move forward. So an update in regards to our testing that we had. Now, again, I want to remind you, we've had three types of testing. We have what we call community testing, which is done with EMS and our staff. And that's Tuesdays and Thursdays at the Lincoln Center. Tuesdays, 1 to 5; Thursdays, 9 to 1. And then we also have wing testing, which is the Wisconsin National Guard testing every Monday from 9 to 5, also at the ADRC. So since we started, which was the 6th of October, we've had 1,598 total tests run with our testing. Out of that, we've had 231 positive tests. Out of that 231, 191 of those are Portage County residents. Our positive ratio is right around 14%. So that number of 1598 does include 206 tests that we did with strike teams. I did talk to you about the fact that we are doing strike teams. So we have had strike team events at a nursing home, some group homes. We had a strike team in our jail last week. So we've been at various places in the community doing these strike team events and testing people as well. So at this time, we are currently employing about 21 FTE contact tracers. We are looking actually at adding more contact tracers. Right now, we're about five days out. So what I mean by that is that it's taking us five days to get the positive tests, or to contact those positive tests. It's not that they're not notified, because every positive test should be notified by their provider that provided the test, including what happens with our testing. So they know they're positive. It's just that we have such a volume of positive cases that it's taking us about four to five days to get to those positive tests before we can actually contact them. We are operating under a crisis standard right now. At the beginning of the pandemic, when we had a positive test, we would contact the positive. We would do an exhaustive contact, close contact list with them. So places they've been, family members, other close contacts. Right now, under crisis management, the best we can do is contact the positive test and get them the information about close contacts, because we simply just don't have the time. If we were to do, basically, the way, if we go back to our original standards, that was taking us about three hours to get through all the information, to get to the close contacts and things like that. And if it took us three hours, even if we had every one of our contact tracers on, we're not getting through many a day. And right now, we're averaging 40 to 50 positives a day. There's still days we're getting 85, 90 positive tests. So we'll continue to work seven days a week, eight to 10-hour operational period. We'll continue to do the best work that we can to serve the people here in Portage County. Any questions I can answer for you tonight?
Supervisor Matcowski.
Thank you, Director Shabelsky. One question I have. What's been turnaround time on tests? I've been hearing a lot with people that are getting tested. They're looking at a five to 10-day turnaround. Is that pretty standard? Or it seems like we've kind of slowed down on the turnaround. Is that because of the sheer number of tests in the state? Or could you enlighten us on that?
Sure, sure. So right now, with our testing, it is about five days out that you're going to get your results back. A lot of it has to do with which lab you're using. A lot of the lab testing is going through Exact Sciences, which is what we use. It's just the volume of testing that's slowing it down. You can still get test results in 48 to 72 hours, depending on where you go. If you're going to one of the private medical providers, so Ascension, Marshfield Clinic, Aspiris, you can get results quicker. But again, and we're talking about results for just PCR testing, so the swab testing. There are antigen tests out there. Those are much quicker. But a positive antigen test is going to require a PCR test to validate. So.
Thank you.
Stan Pataki.
Brad, you say we're getting 40 to 50 positive tests a day?
Yes, sir.
Where are they coming from? Can you tell us?
Well, Stan, that's a great question. And really, what we're seeing is they're coming from everywhere. We're seeing outbreaks associated with large gatherings, but small gathering as well. You know, I mean, we had a positive case identified. And he said, "The only place I've been is I went over to my buddy's house to watch the Packer game." There were two people. So it's a variety of different situations that we're seeing, not attributed to one specific place or business or anything like that. It's just simply across the board.
Supervisor Syke.
Thank you. It's been brought to my attention that some of the tests that are used would pick up on every coronavirus. So I guess my question would be, is that true? And if it is true, are we using such a test?
Not to my knowledge, Mr. Syke. You know, the tests we're using, the PCR tests that we're using are specifically looking at the coronavirus.
The coronavirus?
I'm sorry, excuse me, the COVID-19 virus. Sorry, I misspoke there. So that's what it's looking for. It's not picking up on any coronavirus, which is everything from the common cold to the flu and things like that. So that's not what we're seeing.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Splinter.
Just a quick question. Have you heard anything coming down as far as a virus? I mean, as far as a vaccination? And if so, are we putting together plans on how to distribute it throughout the community?
Absolutely. So there's lots of talk out there right now. As, you know, because we talked earlier that we were kind of in mitigation. We're long past mitigation right now. So the next step will be, and we're having conversations with the state, to move into vaccination. You know, when? That's still anybody's guess. I will tell you that the conversations that we have, it will be tiered vaccination. So that first tier most likely is going to be individuals that work in the medical profession, doing direct care. That second tier of testing is most likely going to include EMTs, although they may get bumped up to the first tier. But things like law enforcement, firefighters, public health, others like that. And then finally, the third tier is going to be that mass vaccination. So we will be applying to do mass vaccinations through our health department here. But I think you're also going to see, and there's lots of pushes to have this put out through pharmacies, other, you know, all medical providers, so they can do that. I think the goal will be, when it becomes available, and if I gave you a date, it would just be pure speculation on my part. But when that becomes available, I think we'll be looking at getting the word out. And again, just to assure everybody, there's no mandate to vaccinations. It would be your choice to get vaccinated. But obviously, from the public health perspective, our goal is to get 80% of the population vaccinated.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody at home? Nope. Thank you, Mr. Shabelsky.
Thank you.
Next item, County Executive Holman, Johnson Controls Update.
All right, good evening, everybody. Just a brief update about the Johnson Controls project that you've heard about over the last couple of months at least. If you've been following the news, you've been hearing things about the CDC and others talking about how the virus can aerosolize and that there's more concern about the movement of air. There's more concern about how HVAC systems handle things and try to help mitigate the transmission of the virus. So about two and a half, two months ago, the county's association told all the counties in the state essentially that there was a variety of different technologies that were available. Johnson Controls is one of the big players that we could meet with to see how that might work out, what that might look like. And at the end of the day, what we put together was a proposal through them that covers like 14 different buildings or building areas. That includes the annex, building, the county jail, the courthouse, healthcare center, ADRC, roof go free, highway, the Plover Library, Stevens Point Library, parks. And we know also that the technology is something that we can probably, for smaller jobs, do internally so that we can get the equipment and facilities can go out to the rational branch of the library, for instance, and install out there. But the technology itself is bipolar ionization. It's not specifically for COVID-19 or viruses, but it does ionize virus particles or allergens, molds, dust, particles, all these sorts of things, and pulls them out of the air essentially, neutralizes them. So we thought it was a good project. You know, Chiraga had Johnson Controls here really quickly after we first started thinking about this idea. The funding for it, a lot of it was available through the CARES Act, so that was helpful as well. We did have to speak with the state a couple of times on how we might structure it. But suffice it to say that we should be able to see the equipment showing up in the next two to three weeks. And then all the projects should be completed probably sometime in December. So essentially, that's the update. Just wanted to kind of give you a closing chapter of the discussions you've heard to date about this project that we've been talking about. So if anybody has any questions, I happen to answer those.
Any questions? Anybody at home have any questions? Nope. I'd just like to say, I said it before, and I'll say it again. I want to thank staff. This happened very, very fast for government to try and do something. And we were under extremely tight time crunch. And it seemed like every time we found one area that was good, we found another area that we had to work on to try and figure out how to get through. So hopefully, this is something that benefits all of the staff as well as the public when they come into the buildings. Killing cold and flu, or knocking out cold and flu viruses out of the air is something that this will be able to do for the next five to 10 years. We've got, we'll be looking at equipment to be able to monitor it, to make sure that it continues to work well and have it in the air system so that even when the public or anybody else is here too, there's a lot of benefits to this. So hopefully, this is something we can get done fairly quickly. So Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Executive Holman. I guess my only question would be, and I'm probably going to answer the question myself, but I'm assuming we would prioritize and probably get it into the healthcare system or the healthcare facility, and then the jail first. I mean, we probably have a healthier workforce than we do as when it comes to the healthcare system or healthcare buildings in the jail. I'm assuming we prioritize.
When we first started this, we had a smaller list. And as we got into it, those were the priorities. And as we got into it, we expanded the list to cover all of the rest of the buildings. But that was the original intent, but to prioritize them. I'm sure that that will be the obvious intent of Todd and staff as they work through them to make sure that our highest risk areas are covered first. So thanks for that comment. Anybody at home? No? Thank you. Public notice. Members of the public who wish to address the county board on specific agenda items must register their request at this time with such comments subject to reasonable control of the county board chair set forth in Robert's Rules of Order. I have a list already up here. Is there anyone else that would like to speak that's in this room or the other room on any of the agenda items that hasn't already signed in? The sheriff is going to go over there and take a look and see if there's anybody. Bear with us, folks at home. How many do we have here?
Mr. Chair, they just asked that if something wasn't covered, if you can ask at the end, if there's anybody else that wants to speak.
We've got 12 people that are listed on here. And I will go into my talk just before that. So, yeah. We can do that. Next item, 2021 budget public hearing. I will adjourn our annual meeting to hold the public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to speak? I believe I can adjourn the meeting because I can adjourn a regular meeting.
If not, I will motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting by Supervisor Barry Jakowski. Seconded by Supervisor Rakowski. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are in the public hearing for the budget. Anyone wishing to speak on the 2021 county budget? The sheriff is checking the room next door. Sheriff, did you find anybody that wanted to speak on the budget?
Not on the budget, but on the south, there's more people.
Okay. Anybody? Well, that's the... We have Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
I'll move to close the public hearing on the budget.
Motion, seconded by Supervisor Splinter. Any discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're back in our annual meeting. If there are no objections, I would like to move item number seven to item number one. We have a lot of public here. Once we get dispense of that action, we can allow those people to leave. So if there's no objections from anyone here or at home? Thank you. I will go through the list here. And each person is allowed three minutes. If someone else has said the same thing, just say, "I agree with it," just for sake to try and move through 12 or more people that you would like to agree with the statements that were said earlier. Instead of using up your three minutes, I'm not allowing anybody to pass their three minutes to someone else or to stack them. So... Yes, if you'd read it, please. Number seven.
I'm just out of order here. One second. All right. Resolution number 522022 submitted by the Health and Human Services Board. This resolution amends the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, creating section 4.10, communicable diseases.
Becky Cresson? I need a motion and a second to put it on the floor, please. Motion by Supervisor Barry Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Morrow.
We found out about this late last week. And from what I've heard today and yesterday, most of the general public did not know, including law enforcement, teachers, local officials. This is not something that should have just been passed in the committee and then came onto the agenda tonight to just automatically be voted on without public say on this. That's just... When it's this important with this many things in it that will become permanent, not just for COVID, but for anything else that might come up in the future, to just pass this without community members having a say is insane. There is on the list of communicable diseases, there's almost 100 different diseases on there. And so while we like to think that nobody would misuse this at any point, we have no idea what our government and our society will look like five years, 10 years, 20 years, whatever down the road, because this is permanent. And so the fact that they can use Lyme disease or the common cold or anything that's considered contagious to inspect public businesses and force quarantines and limit the businesses that can open at certain times because it's written here? That's... This just leaves the door wide open to so many things that this needs to be amended to have more control. This is just... This is craziness, you know? And it says that the decisions to enforce these quarantines and these restrictions are all based on the head of the health officer for Portage County. So it's based on the judgment of one person. And that these can go in, the orders can go in for 60 days and then subsequently for 30 days. And that has no limit on it, according to this. That's insane. So, yes, there are a great many people here today that found out last minute about this. But I'm sure if the general community knew about this, there would probably be hundreds, if not more, people that would show up. Because this affects schools, this affects homes, this affects businesses, this affects everything. So this needs to be at a meeting that the general public has a chance to have a say. This needs to be looked into further so that other, every government official on this board and outside this board that have anything to do with this can give input before this is passed.
Please wrap it up, Becca.
So, um, thank you. I hope you will take into, you know, suggestion what people have to say today.
Thank you. Renee Katoewski? Rhea? Rhea? K-I-T-O-W-S-K-I.
You have somebody coming, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
It's Rhea Katoewski.
Thank you.
I don't really have anything prepared because I literally found out about this halfway through my workday. So considering what I've read so far, which I was really hoping that the board could clarify all of the different ordinance things because I didn't even have time to read all of them. But it looks like, it looks like there's going to be a lot of infringement on our rights, just to say the least. I guess one of them being, you know, that orders that shall be in effect for no longer than 60 days but may be renewed for a succeeding 30-day or shorter period based on local health officers' updated evaluation of local medical and public health conditions. Reading that and knowing that you guys could just continue to do the 30-day extensions without really anybody saying that, you know, that they disagree with it. It's just going to be passed. And then where's the endpoint, you know? I guess I wrote some notes while you guys were talking. My take on this is a virus is going to do what it does. It's going to spread, whether we wear a mask, whether we social distance, track, trace, et cetera. We can do everything absolutely perfectly. It's still going to do what it's going to do. And the problem is, where does this end? I mean, how many diseases and how many things are going to come along? And we're just going to operate out of fear. The PCR tests that you guys were talking about, they are overly sensitive. They cycle so many times that they're going to pick up the most infinitesimal amount of virus, not even capable of producing a viral load. So the PCR tests were never really meant to be a diagnostic tool. Another point I have is this. If you do nothing but test people for an illness and COVID-19 just happens to have been genotyped, what do you think is going to happen? We've never tested for things like this before. Can you imagine if you just tested for one of the many different cold viruses out there? I'm sure that some of those would lead to death and some of the elderly in immune compromise. But we don't have, we didn't genotype those. We haven't tested for those. We're sitting here testing for this one thing over and over and over again. And we're finding it everywhere. But that makes sense because it's a virus, like every other virus, and you're going to find it. And I'm not trying to say that this isn't deadly. But the thing is, is how deadly? And how many rights do you want to take away from people over this? And 21 cases since the beginning of this? I mean, it's not the worst thing, I think, that could possibly hit us, to be honest. The other thing is the CDC is no longer surveilling flu cases. So how do we know if somebody goes in and they test positive for COVID, are we going to even look for flu? Maybe they have some other thing that's going on that's really causing their illness, but we're only testing for COVID. So if they're COVID positive, the PCR tests are super sensitive, remember? It's just, you're going to find a lot of cases that aren't really maybe from the COVID even. It might just be flu. It might be another cold or something.
Please wrap it up.
I guess what I call this, it's a political smoke and mirrors using a virus to control people and the economy. And I just want everybody to just wake up and see the bigger picture here. And there's more science involved than the corporate political science that we're hearing, okay? Please, thank you.
Thank you. Keith Kedrowski. Keith Kedrowski?
Good evening. So definitely an overreach. I have a doctor who takes care of my health. I have issues. COPD knocks me down. I mean, COVID gets me, my COPD, I should be gone, I shouldn't be here if I've had it, so I have a doctor who takes care of my personal health needs. I don't need some big government who feels they have the urge and the need to tell me what I can do, day in and day out, crushing my friends' businesses, going out of business 'cause you think you're more powerful and more intelligent than they in regard to their control of who takes what precautions. I mean, what qualifications does this health officer, who's gonna be ruling with iron fist, telling me what I can do, telling my neighbor what he can do, telling me who can come visit me at my house? Who's telling me what business I can go support? Who's telling what business can allow me to come support them? I mean, it's just an absolute overreach. So, I'll say it, it's communistic at total, at every level. I have rights, you people just crush them. It's gotten to be a theme in this area. Stevens Point, Portage County, Madison. Sorry, this isn't socialist country. Plenty of them to go live in. Why don't you live there and rule with your iron fist? Good luck. I don't know, I can wrap it that, I wouldn't even wait for my end warning, but it's an absolute overreach. See no qualification by this health officer that deems them any more intelligent than my doctor. They'll take care of me. I prefer you not try to take care of me. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen Kislowski? Eileen Kislowski? I'm doing my, the best I can, folks.
My name is Eileen Kislowski. I'm a landowner, a taxpaying citizen, and I'm here to speak out against government overreach. I agree with the first person who spoke, the general public deserves to have input, and sneaking this in is kind of underhanded, in my opinion. Some of us on the right believe in less government. When government, when government overreaches, it's not good. I don't think this is what, what Donald Trump had in mind when he gave the states power and recognized the states innate power to decide for themselves how they should handle their pandemic. I saw the five hundred dollar for each violation in here. This is basically allowing legal tyranny. If we don't toe the line and do what you think we should, we get fined. Another penalty is for Jews who didn't sew a yellow star on their jacket. So where will this end? Will it be required to take a vaccine that I might not trust? Will I need permission to leave my house? Where will this end? I'll tell you right now, the masks don't work, okay? They don't stop the virus, your tests are not accurate. My parents personally know people who signed up for one, waited, left because the line was long, and then got notice of a positive test. Wake up. Violation, penalty, and enforcement procedures, fining individuals and penalizing businesses for enjoying their constitutional freedoms is wrong. I'm an adult. I should have the say in what I decide for myself, what I decide for my minor children. I don't need other people telling me what to think, what to do. I understand there is a pandemic going on. If people are scared, they can stay home, and they can order online. When I go to the store and I'm not wearing a mask because I don't think they work, I get told, "You can order online." Why should I have to order online? I'm not scared. This has a ninety-nine percent survival rate. Give it to me. Then I'll have antibodies, I'll have a natural immunity. I'm not scared. You wanna be scared, you can stay home. Cower in the corner, walk back and forth, don't leave ever. But I should have the freedom to decide for myself where I go, and whether or not I wear a mask. I don't need anybody to tell me where to go, what to do, and what to do when I get there. Close government overreach. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Brock Maddox?
Hi, uh, my name is Brock Maddox. Uh, I'm also here to stand against the government overreach. Uh, and that's exactly what's going on. Um, I run a group with almost three thousand people, and this COVID issue, uh, within my, uh, group, um, all the other issues that COVID, this COVID pandemic is creating, the mental health issues, uh, the drug overdoses, the domestic abuse, I, I, I hear people talking of stories on my page every day for four months now, and all these other issues are tearing families apart. I see it, I hear it every day. I, at night, uh, I lose sleep at night, hearing about all the other side effects that you guys are creating with these, uh, uh, the government overreach and, uh, these amendments you're, you're, uh, trying to pass here. Um, I'm in here, here for opposition. Uh, this is the United States of America, we live in a free country. We have freedoms and rights, and they're being taken away every day. Uh, I can tell you right now, there's nobody coming to my house and taking my family or my kids away from me, whatever, regardless of what you pass. So, uh, I'm gonna close with, uh, freedom will prevail, one way or another.
Thank you. Thank you. Tamara Kobach? Tamara Kobach?
Uh, I was, uh, recently made aware of this within the last twelve hours, and, um, I have been, I've lived in this, in Stevens Point for thirty-seven years, I've been a CNA for nineteen years in this town, and, um, I have two young children in school, and, um, to see how these laws are affecting everyone, I see it in all, in, in the children, in the school systems, I'm seeing, you, you hear it on the news, um, it, it is affecting them on so many levels, and to now try and pass something like this without being publicly, you know, have everybody in our community aware of, of this going on, I feel is, is very wrong, and, um, I, I, I completely disagree, and, and I hope that, uh, people will try and stop this from happening, because this is taking away our freedom, this is taking, this is taking away a lot from, um, I see it from, um, my children, and I see it, uh, from my clients, how much this is affecting them, and this is only going to affect everything worse, and, um, so that's all that I have to say about it.
Thank you. Bill Hoffman?
Thanks for having me. I look around, and most of you are story-eyed and glazed-eyed and ignoring a lot of this going on, it's just words to you guys, it's not. I've been here fifty-one years in Portage County, I've had over a dozen businesses or parts of businesses in this county. I've employed a lot of people, I've listened to a lot of people. Most of you people here are older than I am, so I make, so you make more sense than I do, you understand me better. I'm fifty-one and retired. Sixteen years in a paper mill called Consolidated Papers. Like I said, over a dozen businesses, and I'm, I'm retired at this point. None of you have anything to tell me about life. I respect everybody's opinion, but none of you, none of you have a right to tell me what to do and what not to do. All these people that are up here are friends of mine, and I don't know how many people you know, but I know out of the dozen-plus businesses I've had, I recognize maybe four or five of you. That means you have little cliques throughout the community, and you all take this board member job, and you all think you're really special, and you really know everything about what should be done with the bike lanes and everything else going on in this community. We all have a say here, and just because you're on the board does not give you the right to tell the majority how to live. Vote, I weigh this proudly. I've had this on a dozen times in the last month. These people, you better vote for the right way. You're all cushy in your lives at retirement ages. These people are still working. These people want to make a living for their life, for their families, for their wives, and for their future. There's no reason for you to ignore anybody talking today. If you have an opinion, be open to changing it. I don't know where you stopped being patriots, and I don't know where you stopped being Americans. If you followed, if you guys served in any military, if you were part of any war, I thank you, because that's the reason I'm here. I'm here because of the people that fought for my rights to be able to talk today in front of everybody. This needs to stop. The tyranny of this needs to be controlled and changed by the board and the members that are watching on the TV. I don't know where you guys come from, I don't know where you are, y'all have different walks of life, we all do. Don't stop me from walking my walk, and don't stop these people from living their lives. If they are brave enough to walk out of the store with or without a mask, that's up to them. God bless y'all, and I hope you guys make the right decisions.
Thank you. Kim Kryeki?
Yes, I just agree with whatever, what was said, so I don't waste any more time with anybody, so.
Very good, thank you, sir. I'm, I'm still, I, I've got Renee, uh- Thank you.
Hi, my name is Renee Simeno, and I own Renee's Red Restaurant in Stevens Point, which is currently closed because of the COVID. Um, uh, first of all, I'd like to know, who wrote this amendment up? Who wrote this amendment? This, uh, section, chapter four? Where did they come up with, uh, the proceeds of safeguarding? Now, does this apply all buildings? So if someone walks into Walgreens, has connect, sitting there waiting for medicine, or buying toothpaste, or candy for, for Halloween, or Christmas, or whatever, has tested positive for COVID, and they were in there, are you gonna close down that whole store? Are you gonna close down Cops? Are you gonna close down the big one, the Walmart? Are you gonna close down all these other businesses? But no, you're gonna target hotels, you're gonna target mom-and-pop restaurants and bars. I think it is very unfair on how this amendment has come about. Again, you're, you're just doing it again on the COVID. There are other nasty viruses out there that can do the same thing, pub, to people's health. You can't, you know, granted, yes, it's not a virus. You can't control lice. How in the world are you gonna control viruses? Even taking the vaccination will not always work. I believe that this board should table this amendment until there's further public review and further support on how exactly this amendment should be written and be able to help all citizens of Portage County in all, in all capacity. That would be the best thing as a board to help us, this community, get through the crap that we're going through. Yes, I understand there's hair raising and whatnot. I'm not making any money, because my business is closed, because it was our choice, obviously, but then again, someone walked in my place, "All right, you're COVID, you did the same thing at how many other bars? Oh, nope, gotta close you down." You can sit and clean and have hand sanitizer and everything. It's not fair. I'm hoping the board will please take into consideration to table this amendment and do further investigation and review and public support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Troy? Troy? Troy H.?
I'll take that.
Can you pronounce it, please, for?
Uh, name's Troy Hinowski.
Oh, Hinowski, okay.
Well, I just say, uh, thank you all for letting us speak, here's many number of us all here, I'm not gonna take my three minutes, I'm gonna probably take two and a half, not even two. Uh, I own Graffiti Sports Pub in downtown Stevens Point, I have been in downtown since nineteen ninety-four, when I was twenty-four. Bill and I are the same age, he's retired. I'm not. Uh, so I still have a, a good thriving business in downtown Stevens Point, I'm also the, um, member and, uh, president of the Stevens Point Business Alliance. Uh, I'm not here as a Stevens Point Business Alliance president today, because this all came up so fast, I was actually in a tavern league meeting this afternoon, somebody got a phone call, and most of our, uh, membership, actually all the membership, knew nothing about this happening tonight. So we actually shut down tavern league meeting in a rapid hurry, and now we rallied up, uh, to come here to this meeting today to get our, our opinion across. Yes, um, I personally have not read the entire ordinance, there's a lot there. I saw one line on the agenda, I have no idea what that really meant, no idea, this would just got pushed right down the pipeline. I see a lot of good customers here, and I'm pointing fingers, 'cause I see customers of mine, okay? And I see customers on that screen. I, as a business owner, do everything I can to keep them safe. You come into Graffiti's, you will see all those protocols in place, the CDC guidelines, okay? You will see all that happening, and we are abiding by all that, and we are doing all that, okay? Because we are making it safe for our guests and our customers, because I want you to come back, and I want you to be a good customer, and I have tons of customers who are thanking me and honoring me for doing that, okay? What we don't need to happen is something to get piped down, pushed down the pipeline so quick, so fast, without this public input, the small segment of people that are here today, small segment, very small, uh, one of the speakers earlier said something about over a hundred, there'd probably be thousand, four, okay? Better get a bigger space, right? We have an open day, nice environment, okay? Let's wait till the next July fourth, maybe, let's do it at the Pifner Park, okay? Right? But I'm telling you what, government overreach on this instance right now is definitely not needed. We need support, we don't need the iron fist coming down, okay? You lady said earlier, we know, if I wanna go out, I'll go out. If you don't feel safe, stay home. Who in this room swims? Ever go to the ocean? Ever go in the ocean? You like going to ocean? You better not, you might not come out. Undertow, sharks, whatever, you may not come out. We have to live in America, not to just hide behind some sheet, some piece of paper that says, "We're ill, we're sick." Now, trust me, like I said, I'm following every guideline in my business, every one. I don't have to, it's just asked of us, but I'm doing it. Those guests that wanna come out and partake, and have a good meal, a good dinner, or your takeout, or curbside delivery, or E Street and DoorDash, and all the other programs that are available that we're doing, that's all available, fine, do that. This mandate to push through the pipeline without the larger public knowing what's on those three, three or four pages, actually, I have it on my phone now, 'cause I just took a picture of it off of, off of Renee's here. Please, do your job as our county leaders, and do not push this through tonight. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Joel? Joel Benner?
And what's this, Andrew?
The question would I like to ask is-
The question would I like to ask is, the two-hundred-and-thirty cases, I believe, I remember hearing that come up positive every day for COVID. It was answered, not very specific, I didn't think. There probably is more of an Excel spreadsheet where people are contracting this. If it's happening at funerals, if it's from college students. But I guess, knowing how that is being spread, to be able to come up with guidelines to go with. But the laws that are, or what you're trying to pass, seems like it's really infringing on people's rights and small businesses, which is really hard and, but I guess that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, guys. I just want to say, you guys look like you're probably all college educated. Probably got bachelor arts degrees in something. Very little science behind you. I have some science, but I was a history major. This board's been around a long time, so has our state. I find it curious that you guys think you suddenly are smarter than everyone's come before us who's dealt with pandemics, who never passed legislation that had anything to do with this. We've had worse stuff than this before. Didn't have to put a heavy hand down, shut businesses down with all the things we've gone through in a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty years in this county? And you guys, all of a sudden, oh, you guys are smarter than everyone else? Hey, we can invent this thing and make it different? No, you're not smarter. The people in the past were smarter than you. They dealt with shit. They saw real pandemics and they dealt with it like that. They didn't use the government to squash the people. You guys need to table this shit, vote no, and, you know, wake up to the little people who live in this county. You guys are terrible.
Thank you. That's all we have on the list. If there's anybody else that would like to speak prior to Barry, just hold on, Barry. We'll let these other few. And please state your name and, yeah. And we may need a spelling depending on it.
Yes, my name is David Iden, E-I-D-E-N. I resided in Stevens Point for a long time. This is more than government overreach. It's the imposition of a police state. And the devil's in the details, which we don't know. It makes me more suspicious, the fact that we're going to try and slip this under the rug here. You know, you've put people's businesses and lives on hold. It makes me sick to know that our children are in their schools, wearing their masks, getting an even poorer education. And this continues with heavy-handed teachers and others. And my son's a senior. He's got one year left. Is this going to be ruined for him? How many businesses are paid? Even the COVID numbers don't wash. Oh, two, three million deaths in the country? We're at, what, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, maybe? You have people with comorbidities and the elderly and infirm are at high risk, obviously. In three months with the flu overtaking some of these individuals also sadly, will this be reported? I'm tired of hearing about the daily COVID report because it's all become political and it's all designed to scare people. We're tired of being scared. We're tired of being told what to do. And I'm urging you very strongly to oppose this because we're going to be watching. And we've had it with this, okay? Let people live their lives. If they don't want to wear masks, that's fine. There's problems with wearing masks that nobody wants to admit. We just want to impose it. And it seems to me that a number of you have jobs. You'll sit at the crux of power and ensure that you're working. People are really fed up with this stuff. We need to get on with our life. It's a free country. Read the Bill of Rights. Again, the devil's in the details. What about invasion of privacy? Right to be secure in your home and your papers and your property? Is this out the window? Because this should scare everybody when a handful of people can tell you what to do. This is going on at the local level. It's going on at the state level. It's going on at the national level. Let's hope the governor finds his day in court and is shot down on this. You've got people out of business. There was a recent radio report stating that within ninety days, there are a great number of businesses that are going to be out of business permanently because of this. You've got pent-up demand in the economy for things and we're just not allowing these people to work. Who is it you're targeting? You know, we have a right to be concerned. And if you go ahead and move on this tonight, you do a great disservice to everybody in the county. You need to get the details of the information about what you're imposing. And are you basing this on one Portage County health official? It just doesn't wash. And a lot of this doesn't wash. So once again, I'm urging you, you table this measure that you're taking and get the information out to the public. Then when we have a right to look at it and not be quite so concerned, we might go along with some of it. But it's doubtful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. One more? One more, Bob. Barry, then Bob. Is that the last one, then, Sheriff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jack Elsinger. I'm a resident of the town of Hall. Last name is spelled E-L-S-I-N-G-E-R.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to talk. Placing this kind of power into the hands of a bureaucrat is un-American. It's outrageous tyranny disguised as virtue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. One more. The last one, last call.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Savoca, last name S-A-V-O-C-A. First of all, thank you for giving me the time to speak today. Unfortunately, I'm not very prepared because there wasn't a lot of time given to the community to prepare for this kind of thing. Not only am I disappointed in the board for not allowing the community to have more time to prepare for this, but I'm also deeply frightened by what I'm seeing. Pray for me. First of all, I'd like to know exactly five hundred dollars for a business and also each person for a fine? If, is that correct? Anyone answer that? Okay.
Well, we'll answer it after we've closed the opener part to the public.
Perfect, thank you. Also, removal from homes, I'm assuming, in isolation? Where exactly do you plan on putting these people that are going in isolation? That's a question that sounds pretty concerning. It sounds more like pick us up, put us in a boxcar and take us and drop us off at a FEMA camp? I don't know. But that's very concerning. I just would really, really like the board to reconsider tabling this until we have more information and that the public can not only review, but make a decision. I don't feel like this is helping anyone. You're infringing on our rights. You are causing more fear in our community and I would like you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Where'd the sheriff go? That was the last one? Very good, thank you. Supervisor Barry Jakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I would like to withdraw my motion to move this forward and subsequently move to postpone this till the public has had a chance to weigh in on it at a further date.
So for post, are you sending it back to committee or postponing? I can't take a motion to postpone it, I don't believe. I have to have either a definite time to bring it back or to send it back to committee. I believe I need an action.
Then we'll go with send it back to committee at an open meeting that the public can attend and weigh in on.
I have a second motion. I got a motion to send it back to committee and a second by Supervisor Pataki. Any other discussion? Supervisor Matt Jakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Barry, for making the motion to bring this back to committee. I would encourage the committee to have an open meeting. The committee, when they met on this, had a teleconference committee or a virtual-only committee. If you look at the Wisconsin Open Meeting Law Guide, it states in the Wisconsin Open Meetings laws that to comply with law, a government body conducting a meeting by teleconference call must provide the public with an effective means to monitor the conference. This may be accomplished by broadcasting the conference through speakers located at one or more sites open to the public. It was brought to my attention that there were no sites where the public could attend. They had to either call in or they had to via WebEx. That is not an open meeting by Wisconsin statutes, the way this Open Meeting Law Guide. We have to have a place for somebody to attend if they don't have telephone capability or they do not have virtual capability through a computer. So when the committee has this, if they decide to meet as a committee virtually, they have to have a place set up for people to meet, to come and meet in person and appear in person. That's part of Wisconsin Open Meetings laws.
Mr. Shabelski, was this meeting held at the healthcare center? Or at the Ruth Guilfree Building?
Yes, sir.
And that was the way it was noticed on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
So they, there were a lot of people that attended it virtually, but you, staff, it was open to the public and it was noticed as such?
As a virtual meeting, that is correct.
As a virtual, but also, so I guess what I'm trying to get to or understand was that it was noticed at a location was the Ruth Guilfree Building? No, just all virtual, okay.
So therefore it was a violation of the Wisconsin Open Meetings laws?
Okay. Just trying to get some background on it. Thank you, Matt. Supervisor Splinter, then Supervisor Gifford?
I agree on returning this to the committee. I got this in the mail on Friday. So I'm, as a county board supervisor, still digesting this. From what I can see, a lot of this is statutory language, but if it's a brand-new ordinance, I need to know that. If it's, if parts of this are added on to, such as the five-hundred-dollar fine and the potential of losing a liquor license and such, I like to see that as highlighted as something that you're changing to this ordinance. Again, if it's an entirely new ordinance, they should state that. But I think the overreach or the teeth that people are feeling on the back of their necks are the potential of being fined five hundred dollars for not complying with the mask ordinance. Or if a bar, and there's, there are a lot of outlying bars in the county. The farther out you go, I think the less masks are involved. And that's kind of your decision to go to that bar or not. But to come in and Ray's already trying to chase down first contacts and everything else and put this on him as far as chasing down what bar, restaurant is complying, what's not complying, I think is overburdening him. But I think the, Ray's job is to advise this board as to what's going on. And if someone in the county is spreading a disease and it's known, he can come to his board on an emergency meeting and say, this business should be closed down because I've given them two or three notices already and nothing's changed. But it shouldn't be up to one person to allocate a citation or a reification of a liquor license. So I'd like to see when it comes back, that five-hundred-dollar fine and the liquor and the license issue deleted because I think it's unnecessary and it's, again, as many people have said, it's a bit of an overreach on our part. Thank you.
Supervisor Gifford?
Yeah, would I be in order in speaking after the public speakers relevant to this or?
You can speak right now.
Okay, then I will. You know, the second speaker, I think it was Maria, said that we need to see the big picture. And y'all are probably tired of hearing me talk about the big picture, which is the economic dislocation, devastation, disruption, whatever you want to call it, that a global virus epidemic has caused. And I think of the comments that I heard tonight, all of them are dealing with our local government overreach in a situation that is caused by a global economic crisis. And I've said this since that first meeting in July, that this is going to cause economic dislocation for many quarters to come, right? And we talk about government overreach. Well, you know, the nation of China did government overreach because they have a state economy. They shut down. They now have a total tally of ninety thousand cases total cumulative versus USA, which had nine million. They had, the first three weeks of September, zero new cases, zero, none. Other nations like Vietnam and New Zealand, parts of, well, South Korea, these countries locked down. They closed up. They got back on their feet, right? And meanwhile, you know, when people talk about the jobs are being, or the businesses are being crushed. Well, you know, this county board and Governor Evers are not crushing the global airline industry. They're not crushing the production of United States petroleum. These things are responses to a vast, huge global economic crisis. And whether we table this thing, whether we make, maybe if we make this thing go away, we don't make the global economic crisis go away. In our community, I guarantee you, it's going to be poorer, less equal, more distressed, with more people in housing crisis, food crisis, job crisis for the next two or three years. So, I mean, we should see the big picture. And just in response to the accusatory tone, I feel like we've been on trial here tonight. Well, I worked in the workforce for fifty-five years, most of that time for gigantic corporations in the Fortune 500. I never had the liberty to decide when I'd go back from a layoff. If they laid me off, I stayed laid off until they called me back. So I don't have a cushy job. I get eleven hundred bucks a month from Social Security. So I kind of resent people coming in and telling me that we all live these cushy lives and, you know, we're smarter than everybody or pretending to be. You know, my first paper certificate from a school was welding certificate in Minneapolis. My second was CAD/CAM certificate in Milwaukee. So, I mean, people should chill just a bit and take a look at that bigger picture and see what we're trying to do. We're just trying to protect public health. That's what we're about. Thank you.
I guess I don't necessarily believe the numbers coming out of Communist China, so I have a tough time with that. Who's next? Supervisor Barry Jakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I moved to bring this forward so to allow the people in the audience to speak this evening. I do believe there's been an overwhelming majority of the people that talked here this evening that would like more input on it. Yes, we are in the middle of a healthcare crisis. But I think that one of the reasons that we are here as elected officials is because we live in a free country. The people have asked us to give them more time to digest this. And that's what they're looking to get, is some more time to digest this. When they understand it more fully, there may, there's things that they're interested in. There's things that they don't understand at this point. And there's things that probably members of this board do not understand at this time. And I think we're all, both this board and the people who spoke this evening, looking for things to be clarified. Now, I don't know whether this will ever go any further than it is this evening, but I think as an open government society, we need to give the public more time to react to this. And that's all the public is asking for. So again, I would ask and move that we vote to table this this evening, send it back to committee, allow the public to speak on it, allow the public to absorb it and move on from there. Thank you.
Supervisor Gussel? Speak into the mic, please. Speak into the mic, Charlie. Thank you. That's good.
I have one question in particular to ask. How many other municipalities have enacted this type of ordinance? We have seventy-two counties. If they each do this and you cross the county line, this is going to be... If they each do this and you cross the county line, this is going to be a bunch of BS.
No, I know that, I know that it's been, one of the items on calls, weekly calls, where it's been a topic where other counties have talked about it for clarification, and that was the purpose or the intent of that, was to clarify some of the things. There are things in here that are additional to that, that are state statute already, so. Supervisor Madine, then Supervisor Soik.
I hope you don't mind, I want to take my mask off so I can speak a little bit more clearly. I'm a member of Health and Human Services, and of course, I was at the meeting, and I had a number of questions, and I'd like to just go over what the response was so we have a better idea of what was the reason for this. I'm strongly in favor of referring it back to the committee. I know a number of the people who spoke today, and they have a legitimate concern. The first question that I had, we have a health department, so therefore we have a health officer. The health officer is given statutory authority.
252.
And so this was proposed to document the, and set out the health officer's obligations and responsibilities under the statutes that would not be as vague as those that are in the statutes now, but would be a little bit more specific for Stevens, for, excuse me, for Portage County. The, this is, another question I had was, and the answer was, this is, sets up an administrative protocol, it really doesn't have any enforcement mechanism outside of the health officer working with viral outbreaks. Any health, excuse me, any enforcement mechanisms would have to go through the proper committee that would have a staff that would enforce it. So it would have to go back through Health and Human Services for staff that may work with enforcement. There is no enforcement now, under this language. It may have to go back through Public Safety, if there was someone in the Public Safety staff that would be requested to enforce this. Or it may go through, if it's building, within buildings, it may have to go through planning and zoning, if there's a staff member that would be there to enforce it. But there's no enforcement mechanism within this, it's administrative protocol at this time. Just one additional thing, this may not be the most helpful thing over the long run, but under the short run, we have a very objective and very professional health officer. I'm pleased with the way that he has worked within the system during this pandemic. We see on TV some of the other local counties where the health officer is on all the time, and in some ways, bringing out issues that really don't exist. In this county, our health officer, Gary Garsky, is professional and objective, and he's handled this objectively throughout, all the way through the very beginning of this, when there was issues whether the, some of the, some of the young kids should be in sports, some of the other counties, the health officer said they shouldn't have it. Gary worked with all of those sports programs to see if there was a way that those sports programs would work through the summer and the fall, and they were, they worked out very good for Portage County. The, I think that's really all I had tonight, which helped me understand what the, how this was initiated and essentially required under state statute. Not, I mean, it needs to be amended, don't get me wrong, but we need to have something under state statute, otherwise we have a health officer that's not able to do his job.
And I would, I would agree with you Supervisor Madine, that both Gary and Ray have done a good job with what they have to deal with at this time, is, but as this is written, it also, you have to look at the fact that they won't be there forever, you have to look at the position and not the person. So as you had stated, some of the other places have different people and staff, that could be us in the same state down the road, so we need to make sure that when we're looking at this, we're looking at that and keep that in the back of your mind as well. You don't know who will be in those positions. Supervisor Soik, then Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think there's only one direction to go with this tonight, now that it's been brought to the light of day that this was done in violation of the open meeting. I believe the only direction to go is to throw this out tonight. You, as the chair, can do so. It was done in violation to the open meeting, therefore it should not be here tonight, we should not be discussing it. It should go back to committee as something brand-new, and the committee should take a look at it after the state takes a look at it. I have it on good authority that pending the outcome of the election tomorrow, the state will be looking at this.
I don't know if I need to throw something out when it's going back to committee to be reworked or recreated, to see what it comes out of that committee, or how it gets corrected or changed, or what product it comes before that. Supervisor Maresi, then Supervisor Dodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I have one question for Attorney Ray. Was this meeting properly noticed to the public? If it was, we can take action. If it was not, then it should definitely go back to committee, and we'd probably notice more public input. Thank you.
My understanding is that it was noticed on the county's website, like all of our other meetings are noticed. Supervisor Dodge, then Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
That was going to be my question, because I see the county executive shaking his head that we had that meeting, it was properly noticed, and I guess I'd like some verification of that. Since the media is here, I don't want that to be the headline, that we did a decision on an ordinance in an illegal meeting. I think that's really important.
Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I have that meeting notice right here in front of me. It's noticed as a virtual meeting only, which draws some concern, because we do not provide a place, as the Open Meeting Law Guidebook said, for public to attend. Also, in that same notice, it says, because this meeting is being held by teleconference, public comments on items of business to be discussed or acted upon will be limited to email only. As a public body that's open to everybody, we cannot limit people that way. What if somebody doesn't have an email address? And I realize, there may be one or two people, maybe the one that sits right next to me in this county, that doesn't have an email address. But we can't limit ourselves that. I don't think this would pass the Open Meetings law test. I didn't make an accusation that we broke the Open Meetings law, I just don't think it passed the smell test. We have to allow those people a chance to speak. We have to provide them a place to speak, if you look at the Wisconsin Open Meeting Law's guideline. Let's get it sent back to committee, and we'll go from there. We're starting the process over, it's going back to committee, we should be good to go. But we need to make sure that we provide a public place for people to listen.
Right.
And we also have to provide a way for people to speak freely about it, because not everybody has an email address. And I worry a little bit about adding public comments to email addresses. Forty-two people can take an email, or one person can make 42 email addresses, put anybody's name on the bottom of it. I worry a little about that when we're starting to take public comment. If somebody's here in person, or if they appear virtually, Joe Public is Joe Public. I, okay, I put a face to Joe Public. I don't know that Joe Public's Joseph Public, Joseph F. Public, Joe, Public Joe. You know, there's some issue with having that email-only comment.
Now, hold on, I, hold on, I got a couple things here, so I just want to touch on, touch on each of, try and touch on each of them as they come up. I don't believe there was any intent of violating an open, I believe that is part of the product of technology and what we are in right now.
Yeah.
So I believe that if that did, in fact, it was what had happened, it was unintentional, but it couldn't have been a worse thing to have happen at this time. But as far as the email addresses and other things, I believe that we do a very good job to try and redact, and Mr. Ray, we've had instances where we have had to redact email addresses so that they weren't part of the public information for that reason, and I believe Kayla's office as well, the county clerk, has redacted email addresses as well, so that it wasn't out there for the public. Is that what you were getting at?
What I was getting at, I don't think it was an intentional violation of Open Meetings law, but by the way it was done, it does it. And the reason I'm saying the email address, you kind of went the opposite direction redacting. If somebody's going to come publicly speak at a meeting, everybody here has to register. So we know who they are, we know their name, we can put a face to that name. What I was getting at is, if I wanted to comment on this one way or the other, I as one person could send 15 emails, from different, 15 different addresses with 15 different names. And there's no way that the committee or anybody could verify that. So that's where I was at.
Yeah, thank you. Chris, did you want to speak at all, or chime in?
Well, Dave's reviewing it, but I also sent, you know, back when this, sorry, back when this all started, just to clear up the Open Meetings bit, the Wisconsin Counties Association put out guidance to every county, which was sent to this body as well, explaining that during this set of circumstances, Supervisor Jakowski is right to say that the public has a right to monitor the meetings. What I will say is that I can tell you there are many counties in this state that have suspended public comment completely. We've done that once, and that was the very first county board meeting when we met back in March. Since then, there's always been a venue for the public to have input, whether it was email, in person, they can pick up the phone, people can call, and just to also, you know, people say we're trying to do a rush job here, the very first time this was discussed at HHS was June 22nd. And every meeting since then at county board, I've explained that we've been working on Chapter 4, and at the last meeting I said, we will be bringing it forward. It came up on the community call last week, we discussed it briefly there as well, and the Tavern League is on that call, so I think some of the folks heard about it, but I also think some of the comments that we're making tonight are because somebody made a call to the Tavern League saying the county has a plan to shut down bars and restaurants for 60 days, and that's not true, there is no plan that exists. So I think a lot of the opposition and people thinking that the county's coming after them is based on a point of misinformation that was provided to them, unfortunately. I took a lot of notes, and I can certainly respond to other questions by understanding that there's a motion on the floor, but it is important, I think, to say that under public health emergency, under the guidance we've received from the Counties Association and the state, it wasn't an improper meeting, and while I certainly appreciate what people are saying, I just don't want the county to come out of this as if something was done improperly.
All right. Is there anybody from home that, no? With that, we have a motion and a second to send it back to committee. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, Mildred Neville.
I just have a question about sending it back to committee. What kind of timeframe does that then turn into?
I would hope that they could put it on their, depending on how much work has to be done with it, whether it can be on the next agenda or when they're meeting. Executive Holman.
Yeah, I wanted to chime in here as well, just because if you want to refer it back to committee, that's certainly a motion that you can vote on, but I think it would really help staff and the committee, who all reviewed this and supported it unanimously, what it is that you want to see discussed? What are the parts of the thing that are problematic? Because there are elements in here that other counties have taken a different look on. You know, the $500 fine piece, some counties have looked at it as less onerous fines, it's up to 500 as well, it's not, it's not a knee-jerk response. Similarly, the unelected bureaucrat piece is that Gary Garsky is not, he's a, he works as staff, but he has direct legislative oversight via me. So I oversee him under statute directly. Now, this policy discussion is what you all frame in terms of the policy. And again, just so we all understand what we're doing here, there was a gentleman earlier who spoke about the history of pandemics. Now, when the Legislature v. Palm case occurred, Speaker Voss said, "Local jurisdictions should handle this." I'm a supporter of local control, local leaders can figure out how they want to handle this. And that's what this discussion is being brought to you, to say, here's the framework of a policy framework for you as a county board to set to say, what is it that Portage County wants to do when it comes to communicable disease? And how does that frame the operational side of the county? And then you have a lot of leeway in that, right? So this is just getting back to the point of, sending it back to the committee is all well and good, but what is it that you want the committee to entertain and to discuss so that we have some guidance from you, so that what we bring back is going to be more in line with whatever your concerns are tonight?
And I would believe that sending it back, some of that is the questions and comments that everybody had heard here tonight. There's a lot of people that are on that committee that are here tonight as well. But I think Mr. Splinter had asked for some things that were specific, where some of these things are in Chapter 252 that are somewhat redundant, that are put into a simple language or repeated in here, but there are some things that are stated because it is, the statute is very vanilla or vague, that we're trying to clarify. And in those, whenever we make other changes to resolutions, we have a procedure that it has to be either aligned, stricken through it, or it has to be in red with the new language. I would, I would think what Mr. Splinter was asking was for something similar to that, in this particular case, anything that wasn't covered already in statute under 252, that was above and beyond that, that we somehow or the other call attention to it. Is there something else you want to add to that, Chris?
No, it's just Chair Hage is bringing up a good point, and it goes back to what I was saying about when the state said, guess what, we're not going to do this, we're going to punt it to local jurisdictions? That was the question that they posed to 72 counties. So there is statutory reference in state statutes that says, here's the authority, in sometimes undefined, sometimes ambiguous, sometimes very vague terms. And so what counties have been looking at is, how do we take those things and interpret them to the local jurisdiction so that we give clearer authority to our local health officer, so that in the event that there's certain things that you'd want them to do, that they would have clear instruction, again, in that policy framework with how to, how to do that, and that policy is set by you, just like it is for anything else, whether it's the sheriff giving somebody a fine, or planning and zoning, getting a permit, or anything like that. It's, this is not unique, the laws that we're talking about here, the statutes are decades old, there's been nothing in this that's been created out of thin air. Isolation and quarantine came up, that happens now, like people isolate in their homes. There's nobody taking people's out of their house. I mean, we had an isolation center for people who might have had, say, a spouse with cancer, who they didn't want to be in the same house with, but then, of course, we lost that isolation center. So now people isolate at home, they quarantine at home. But that's the point, like, that's what we're, that's already happening under state statute, like, and this actually speaks to that too, saying that this doesn't restrict things that are already clear in statute. So there's, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding, for sure, but I think, again, why I'm asking the question of what do you need to be, have clarified, is something that we want to hear so that we can provide you the answer, and we can have that conversation, because typically the committee process works, but if there's ways to tweak it, then we can do that.
Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Seeing so that I am moving to have this sent back to committee, what I would ask that the committee do is schedule a date for the public to give some input on this, then take those concerns of the public, and then address those. For us to sit here this evening and say, well, as elected officials by that public, to say, well, I want this question answered tonight, which are all valid questions from this body, but I think the public outcry that we've heard this evening, they have concerns as well. So I think the committee should listen to all the public input and the public concerns, not just the ones coming from this board, but from the public in general, and then move forward from there. For this, this board, in this body, to ask that committee to look at a few specific situations or consequences of those situations, I think is premature, and I believe the public needs to weigh in on this. Thank you.
Supervisor Soik, then Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
Thank you, Barry. You said just about everything that I was going to bring up. I appreciate Supervisor Splinter's concerns in what he has to offer and what he has in mind. And I know I don't have to remind anybody in here, we work for And I know I don't have to remind anybody in here, we work for the people. And it is truly more so about their concerns and what they want answered and what they want done. So although I can appreciate the whole board having questions and concerns and wanting to see language changed, we all have to remember, we work for the people of the county, and if they don't want this, we have to take that into consideration. And again, I would urge the Health and Human Services Committee to wait until the state takes a look at this, because they are going to look at this.
Thank you. Supervisor Matt Jakowski, then Supervisor Gifford to wrap it up.
Thank you, Chair Higgin. Just, just one thing that would have, would have made this easier for me, looking at this, you know, I, I got the packet on Friday. I would like to know, and this can go back to the committee too, I'd like to know what's different than this and what's already granted to us powers under state statute. I, I think that would be a good highlight, if we had a highlight sheet that said, this is what's different than what we're currently granted under state statute. Now, with that being said, if everything in here is granted to us under state statute, why do we have this? So, and, and I, we don't need to get into the nitpick of what's under statute, what's not, this evening, but I think I'd like to have the committee say, okay, here's what state statute covers, here's what we need to cover. I think that'd make it a little clearer.
I think that's what Mr. Splinter was getting at, and I was trying to reiterate. Supervisor Bob Gifford, you're going to wrap it up.
Yeah, just with respect to this public hearing, I would say, I would urge that we get a venue that's of sufficient size where we can practice proper social distancing. Maybe the university would let one of the Collins Classroom 101, or one of the big auditorium-sized rooms. And secondly, I think the Tavern League should designate a liaison to be in contact with Director Shabinsky and Gary Garsky about this meeting and kind of give a, give a heads-up or ballpark how many people they would expect to turn out for the meeting, so we know what to expect. I mean, I think that would be wise.
I think you bring up a good, good point, but it's a double-edged sword, because I don't think that the universities or the schools are, in the past, we talked to Ben Franklin. If we go into Ben Franklin, whether they'll allow us people to go in there now, and if we do, everyone is required to wear a mask, whether you want to or not, in that school, because that's their policy. So I, I think that there are, and as far as, who knows how many will ever show up? It's, it's a guess. That, that's, that's a tough one. So I, whatever we work out, I'm sure it's, it's the best that we have available to us. So we have a motion and a second. We're sending this back to committee, and I think they've got some more direction. And I see Chris is on, on here, he's, I'm sure, taking notes. If we have no further discussion, all those in favor with sending it back, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
State your name, please, with a nay.
Maresi, no.
Yes, Robbie, no.
Johnson, no.
We've got Robbie, Maresi, and Johnson. Anyone else? Motion, motion passes, thank you. Next item, number one, adoption of the 2021 county budget. No amendments were received by the Finance Committee.
Resolution number 46, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution adopts the 2021 budget.
Take a motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Dodge. Any discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number two, adoption of the property tax levy apportionment for the 2020 tax levy payable in 2021.
Resolution number 47, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution adopts the tax levy apportionment.
Motion by Supervisor Lattick, seconded by Supervisor Dodge. Supervisor Reese, do you have a question? You are muted Supervisor Reese.
Apology, just going to second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor with aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three, resolution approving out-of-sequence reclassification request for certified nursing assistant.
Resolution number 48, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Healthcare Center, Human Resources, and Finance Committees. This resolution approves the reclassification of CNAs.
Motion by Supervisor Gifford, seconded by Supervisor Moore. Any discussion? All those in favor with aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Revision to Portage County ordinance 3.11, county health resource policy 3.11, .9, .12, leave of absence.
Resolution number 49, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Human Resources Committee. This resolution amends the code of ordinances 3.11, .9, .12, leave of absence.
Motion by Supervisor Zastro, seconded by Supervisor Matt Jakowski. Discussion. All those in favor with aye? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number five, approving and authorizing QBE as the stop-loss provider for Portage County Health Insurance Plan for 2021.
Resolution number 50, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Human Resources Committee. This resolution approves the 2021 contract with QBE as the health insurance stop-loss provider.
Motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Zastro. All those in favor with aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, approving 1% annual adjustment to the 2021 Portage County salary schedule and incorporating the Healthcare Center schedule into the general schedule.
Resolution number 51, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Human Resources Committee. This resolution approves 1% adjustment for the 2021 salary schedules and incorporates the Healthcare Center into the general schedule.
Motion by, I think Supervisor Maresi, seconded by Supervisor Robbie. You're on the board. Discussion?
Thank you.
Supervisor Bob Gifford?
Yeah, just, just a note on this 1%. I've been doing a lot of research on the phenomenon that's called secular stagnation of the economy. And for the past four decades, basically, our working people have had flat-lined real wages, not nominal wages, but real wages, in terms of purchasing power. So I don't think these folks are going to be getting over with this 1% increase, just to, just so you know.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Supervisor Robbie?
Just clarification. In addition to that 1%, they also have step in lane, is that correct? Or at least they have a step in line predetermined?
County exec is shaking his head yes.
And when you factor that in there, the, I suppose, we don't have any indication what the average increase is, but I'm guessing it's 3%.
We're, we're, we've got people looking here. Hold on.
Oh, he's shrugging his shoulders.
On average, two and a half.
On average, I'm being told two and a half by Laura.
Right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Questions? We have a motion and a-
CPI is 2.6 this year, is that correct?
Can you repeat that, please?
What was CPI this year?
For the month of September, it's, it's at 1.4, but it was as low as 0.4 about two or three months ago.
Did you hear that?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Supervisor Barry Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Dubek. Mildred has a question?
Back on Resolution 48, I think there's something omitted. I didn't see it until we were passing it about the date. It doesn't have November 2nd.
Yeah, we, we will take a look at it, as we've already taken a motion and a second to adjourn, so we are, which, which, you see Kayla after the meeting, so. Forty-eight? Yep. Hold on.
What was the technical amendment?
Just needs today's date on it.
Oh, it just needs today's date on the bottom of it? Okay. We've got a motion and a second to adjourn. All, all those in favor with aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned, thank you.
Have a good day, everybody.